The meeting is live, sir.
Good evening and welcome everyone to the Williamsport City Council Meeting. It's Thursday, May 13th, 2021, 7:16 PM, and we're meeting remotely again this evening. I need to announce that we had an executive session before the regular meeting to discuss legal issues related to a contract. The agenda, item one, approval of city council minutes dated 4/29/21. Is there a motion in second from council?
No move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or corrections? Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item two, limited, item two, limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests tonight. We'll move to item three. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
An ordinance in first reading approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances for Williamsport, Pennsylvania. And this went from ordinance 6383 to 6401.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in second from council?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Lubin, welcome. You're muted.
This is an annual ordinance designed to place within our codified ordinances the ordinances that were enacted last year. And the codified ordinance book does not pick up the budgeted, budgeted ordinances. And that's why in the ordinance itself, there's no CO or codified ordinance section. And this covers up through the ordinance adopting the tax rate and the adopting budgets for this year. And be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is pretty standard. We do it every year to update our ordinances. Are there any questions from council members tonight? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We'll move to item four. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution recognizing Joseph R. Musto for service as solicitor on the zoning hearing board.
I spoke to, we had this set up tonight to pass this to, on Mr. Musto for his time of service on the zoning hearing board. Unfortunately, he found out earlier today he didn't make the meeting tonight. We could pass it, but I'd prefer that we table it so that we could have him present when we read it and he could interact with us a little bit. I think that'd be appropriate. So I'll open that up to council.
I agree with you, Randy. I think it would be more appropriate if he was here for all of us to say something nice to him.
Right. And, and those, those who have served with him would like that opportunity as well, I believe. So we may be able to work that out. Is there a motion in the second to table?
Self-move.
Second.
There's a motion in second to table. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes to table six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. I want to move down to item 11. Since we have people waiting for that tonight. So that up. Would you read that in? No, that's a lot consolidation. So Mr. Nar, you're here tonight?
Yes. Good evening, President Allison and members of council. What we present to you is, is actually two items, a lot consolidation and land development plan. As council was aware, previously on 414 Rose Street, council granted a demolition of the property in order to develop this. Basically, what Hedrick Hardware LLC is requesting to do is now consolidate that 414 and 1254, which is Hedrick Hardware, into one parcel. Again, you approved a demo of the home. So once they demo the home, this lot will be consolidated as one, and a land development plan has been submitted to add 20 off-street parking. What this does will free up some safety issues within that area. And obviously, because of the business, give them more, more parking for the business itself. This was reviewed by both county as well as the planning commission. The county comments that you have in front of you, as well as the plan you have in front of you, have been updated. And again, both of them passed them with a positive recommendation. Council did do the land development, I mean, did do the demo. So this is actually two items, which is the lot consolidation and land development plan itself.
Exactly. So this isn't anything we didn't expect to come before quickly. So are there questions from council members tonight? Mrs. Katz.
Yes, I would just like to say to David Hedrick, I'm very happy to see that this is going to come to fruition. I think everybody's going to be happy coming, going to the store and not fearing for their life as they're trying to back out of that parking space.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, it's, it's a mess.
It's many, it's many years that have gone by with this, and we've all suffered through that. So this is going to be a big improvement.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think we can all second Mrs. Katz's comments. Hearing done then, Mrs. Frank. I'll take a motion in the second from council.
I'll move.
Second.
And there are no more questions from Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes though, six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and thank you, Mr. Nar, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Okay, we'll move back up to item five. Short form, please, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution 2020 state fire grant.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in second from council?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Moving seconded. Chief Killian, welcome tonight.
Good evening, President Allison, members of council, the administration. Resolution before you tonight is to accept the 2020 state fire grant in the amount of $13,659.21. This grant is for debt reduction for the purpose of paying our yearly loan on our command vehicle. The loan amount is $16,004, and this is the second payment out of three. This vehicle will be paid off next June. Again, yearly, just the yearly grant from the opposite of the state fire commissioners. And no matching funds from the city, just the total grant amount. And this was reviewed in finance and passed on to council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Chief Killian. This was reviewed in finance as, as well as items five through 10 were all reviewed in finance. So I'll be going right to Councilwoman Katz.
Yes, this, this does, this was reviewed at finance and it was passed, as Chief Killian said, with a positive recommendation. Happy to have this grant to help pay off the, the Tahoe. And the payment will be going to M&amp;T Bank. And as you said, this is a second payment, and we're very thankful for this grant.
Any other comments from finance committee members or other council members? I hear and see none. So yes, thank you very much, Chief Killian, for being on top of this. And Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We will move to item six. And would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution awarding construction services for like Cumming Creek repair Elm Park project to earthwork services LLC.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in second from council?
Self-move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Sander, welcome tonight.
Thank you, Randy. Good evening, everyone. This is a resolution for, I'm going to talk fast because the baby's screaming in the front room. This is a resolution awarding.
Real life.
Yeah. Sarah's working, so yeah. Anyway, construction service for a scour repair of riprap along the red levy near to Elm Park. This would award to Earthwork Services LLC there out of Danville, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $36,941.67. I pulled this contract together. I bid it for 18 bidders. I'm not going to go through them because we already went through it in finance. Essentially, what the contractor will be doing here is building a temporary causeway across like Cumming Creek from the west to the east because they're not allowed, they're not allowed to drive down the, the wet side of the levy on the east side for the Army Corps requirements. And they're going to be building a causeway to extend out and to place a rock protection that washed away during, actually about 10 years of, of scour. So anyway, this has been an ongoing problem for about 10, 10 to 12 years from aerial photography. Anyway, so this was reviewed in finance with you in front of you. You have all the contract documents, a plan view showing the plan and the repair sketch done by me. And all the contractual paperwork and the bid bond from, from the contractor. They did try to get the Army Corps, if, if an area is caught within, I think it's 60 days of the Army Corps can fund the repairs. However, I spoke to the Army Corps. They said to go ahead and submit for it, and I was denied for whatever reason. I don't know. So that's what pulled the contract together. So that's all I got at the moment. Let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sander. Mrs. Katz and Mr. Yoder.
Yes, this was brought to finance and it was passed with a positive recommendation. We did discuss how the rocks are going to be pulled out of this area. And this is part of the levy problem, as we all know. And this is where the funding is going to be coming from. And we were really surprised at the low bid of this. We really were. I mean, when you look at all the, the other bids that came through with the other 18, well, 17 people that bid on this project, and it's, it was really interesting, the, the breadth of how many, you know, starting at 36,000 and going up to, I think it was a hundred and some thousand dollars. So, you know, this was very surprising, and we did have a discussion on this. And, you know, this should be done, John, I did not ask, and I don't remember if we did discuss this, how soon they're going to be starting on this.
They're looking, well, we've had a lot of rain, obviously. They're waiting, just wait until the creek goes down and low flow essentially. I would say July, August till it's low, and then they're essentially just going to look at the weather patterns and find a dry couple of days, and the whole project, in the water portion of the project will only take, I don't know, maybe three days, maybe four days possibly. They place the rock protection, they pull out the temporary causeway, and then that rock that they use to drive on, on the causeway becomes the property of the city of Williamsport since we already paid for it. And they're going to place it over at Streets and Parks, which is adjacent to the project.
Right, I forgot to mention that. Other than that, like I said, we did pass this on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Mr. Yoder, any comments for the comments from finance? No further comments. I did, I was able to listen into the finance meeting. And I'm not sure if this was covered. Mr. Sander, who, who discovered the issue?
Sure, this, the, this, this particular area was found during last September's annual levy inspection, and the Army Corps called me about it. And I immediately tried to get them to fund their pair, but it was obviously unsuccessful. So the Army Corps themselves actually found the, the area of scour. I mean, it's, it's compromised if we would let it go longer. Essentially, it's like a cracked bathtub, you know, it, you know, fix crack, you don't wait till there's, there's a hole in it. So the little compromised portion of levy that we have to fix. So it's not a major, major item at the moment, but you don't want it around too, too long, obviously.
Okay, all right. That was my only question. And any other questions from council members? Hearing seeing none, Mrs. Frank on motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Abstain.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes five positive and one extension. We'll move on to item seven in short form, please, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to approve CDBG-CB health and welfare public service project.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in second from council tonight?
Self-move.
Second.
Moving seconded. Welcome, Mr. Memmy.
Good evening, Council President, members of council, city administration. With me tonight is Chelsea Blair, the newest Assistant Director of Community and Economic Development. And we're bringing to you tonight four items. The first item is a resolution to approve two projects for development block grant CV funding. These funds are from the COVID-19 CARES Act funds allocated to the city through US housing and urban development. These funds were approved by council for health and welfare public service. So tonight, we bring you two public service projects combined into one resolution as they are being drawn down from the same pot of COVID funding. The first is the Williamsport Vaccination Awareness Campaign in the amount of $49,985. This is a public health service provided through River Valley Health and Dental. River Valley Health and Dental, with the partnership of STEP, developed an awareness campaign strategy for COVID-19 vaccines. Their goal is to educate the public through all media outlets about COVID-19 vaccines and identify the vaccine points. All media material will have to be approved by the city's Community and Economic Development Department before it is released. In addition to developing the campaign, STEP is assisting in the transportation to River Valley Health and Dental for low to moderate income individuals to receive the vaccination. The second project is for the Williamsport YWCA facility renovations in the amount of $40,000. These renovations will assist abused children and battered spouses. The renovations include finalization of the outdoor play area for children who are receiving YWCA services. In addition, the kitchen where multiple families cook at one time will be expanded to meet COVID guidelines. The YWCA currently has $47,000 in matching funds from generous donors to complete both projects. This was reviewed in the finance committee, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Memmy. It was reviewed in finance. I'd just like to say, welcome, Ms. Blair. It's a pleasure to see your smiling face again in City Hall. Your former tour of duty was really valuable to the city, and it was great to get to know you and work with you on projects because we all had the opportunity to do. And you did a bang-up job back then, and you're a great addition to the administrative staff. We all agree on that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes, this is what, this was reviewed by finance, and it was passed on with a positive recommendation. I think Mr. Memmy gave a really good explanation of what this resolution is all about. The only question I, we didn't ask is the percentage of people that are vaccinated in the area. Are we getting to the fullest amount, would you say, as, you know, as, there should be very few people not getting vaccinated at this point, right?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question, Councilwoman Katz. I would hope so, but we're going to try to get, in particular, to those low to moderate income individuals who sometimes struggle to either be able to get to River Valley or other vaccination points and to make sure they understand how important this vaccine is to help stamp down COVID and hopefully at least get it under control and minimize the loss of life.
Well, I'm hoping, I mean, like you said, the step, step is stepping up with this, step and stuff, and to help transportation. I'm just hoping that part of what River Valley is going to be doing is also maybe going to the homes of people that it's difficult for them to get out, you know. And I'm hoping that will be part of what their, their function will be because this is, you know, close to $50,000 is really not a lot of money when you, when you look at the, the bigger picture here. I'm just hoping that we have a city that is going to be fully vaccinated, and so we can all get back to normalcy at this point. So that was my only question. If you knew where we stood with that, but obviously you wouldn't because this is being transferred to a, a group that's going to be doing this and not, not you.
And I believe they are looking to do some mobile units. I can't speak for River Valley Health and Dental, obviously, but I did speak with them a few weeks back. As well as UPMC, I believe they are doing some mobile units as well to the homes or to the high rises. So I think that's going to be part of this effort moving forward.
Which I'm happy to hear.
Other comments from council members? Mr. Memmy, I just had one. When does this all kick in?
As soon as you, if you approve this this evening, we will reach out to River Valley and try to engage. They have already said they have a lot of the materials already right in proof form so that we can start the process as soon as possible.
Okay. I think it's probably really well timed, given the fact that Pennsylvania is going to be opening up from this point on till the end of May, and then pretty much fully open for a while. So, you know, whatever unreached part of the population can be, can be brought in will, will help us through that period without any dire circumstances, hopefully. Okay, hearing no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. And we will move to item eight. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution to approve a CARES Act amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in second tonight?
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And Mr. Memmy, you're up again.
Thank you, President Allison. Tonight, we bring you the second item, which is a resolution to substantially amend the 2019 Annual Action Plan. This resolution is a requirement by HUD to accept a third round of CDBG CV funds from the CARES Act. These funds are for a total of $228,630 and are for services including, but not limited to economic sustainability and recovery, employment, education, and recreation. This was also reviewed by Finance Committee and I believe passed on with a positive recommendation. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Memmy. Mrs. Katz, my name is.
Yes, it was reviewed by Finance Committee, and it was passed on with a positive recommendation. It's going to be interesting to see how this is all going to be dispersed. And we're very happy and thankful that we're getting money through the CARES Act to help our city in so many different ways. And other than that, I think Skip, you, you've explained this as well as it can be explained right now.
Thank you. Other comments from other council members? I think we all think this is a great thing. So thank you, Mr. Memmy, for, for your work on this. Hearing no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. And we'll move to item nine in short form, please, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to approve a CDBG-CV three project.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in the second?
So move.
Second.
Moving seconded, and Mr. Memmy.
Again, thank you, President Allison. This is the third item, which is a resolution to approve a project for CDBG-CV funding. These funds are from the COVID-19 CARES Act third round allocated funds to the city through US housing and urban development. The COVID-19 Annual Action Plan Amendment was the second item this evening, and, and that's where these funds are going to be coming from. We bring you the Williamsport Economic Sustainability and Recovery Project in the amount of $228,630. Through this project, multiple projects and resolutions will be developed to not only recover from COVID-19, but will also make the community as a whole more resilient to future pandemics. This multi-phase project will first focus on project design and development based on functionality and efficiencies of all community sectors during COVID-19. This does include the work being completed by E-Consult Solutions. The second will be project implementation and construction based on phase one. Again, this project will correct any inefficiencies and will result in the community as a whole being more resilient for future pandemics and disasters. Again, this was reviewed in the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Memmy. Mrs. Katz, my name is.
Yes, this was reviewed, and it was passed on with a positive recommendation. I think we can all be thankful that we're getting this money to help our community get back into normalcy at this point. be thankful that we're getting this money to help our community get back into normalcy at this point. And I have nothing further to say. I, again, I'll reiterate, Mr. Meany has done a terrific job of explaining where, where these funds are going to be allocated and how we're going to be working on allocating all this, all these funds.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Other questions or comments from council members? Um, I agree wholeheartedly. So, um, Mrs. Katz on the motion, please.
You mean Janice.
Well, why don't you give it a, you give it a, hey, one there.
Go ahead, Janice.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Bank.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. And we'll move to the last item in this group, item ten, uh, in short form, please, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in second?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded and the final one, Mr. Memme.
I'm sure you're all getting tired of hearing me, but I'll try to be as quick as I can.
Absolutely not. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, President Allison. Uh, tonight we bring to you the fourth item, which is a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-one annual action plan for CDBG and home for the city of Williamsport to receive federal funding for affordable housing and community development initiatives benefiting primarily low and moderate income persons. This annual plan consolidates into a single document, the planning and application requirements for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual action plan is consistent with the priorities and goals set forth under fiscal year twenty twenty to fiscal year twenty twenty-four consolidated plan. The allocation for twenty twenty-one is, under the CDBG program, one million forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And under the home program, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars for a total of one million, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and six hun, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Again, this was reviewed in the finance committee and I'll only add one thing because a question that came out of, of finance and we did a little bit more research. Uh, as of the latest twenty nineteen American Community Survey, the population for the city of Williamsport is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-six, which is a little bit better than what was in our documentation initially. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Memme. Uh, Mrs. Katz, we've even found years.
Yes, this was reviewed and it was passed on with a positive recommendation and, uh, happy to hear the, uh, numbers went up, Skip. It, I think we were all getting a little hyper because the numbers in here, uh, reflected quite a bit less. Uh, because we know how much, we've all talked about keeping the numbers of our, our city up in order to maintain some of our funding that we get. And people don't realize that, that, um, we do have to have a certain amount of population in order to get the, 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 the allocated funds. Uh, one of the things that, um, we did not discuss is, um, there was a, a supposedly a public display from April fifth to May fifth for the public, uh, to, uh, see what this plan is about. Because you often wonder if this plan gets into, uh, the right hands, that people are aware of this plan. And every year when we discuss this, I think that's a question that always comes up. And, um, if you've heard from anybody, has, has anybody gotten in touch with the office about this?
Uh, Mrs. Katz, uh, actually there was, was, was no comment received. We did hold two public hearings through, uh, Zoom and, and, um, we also did have the document on the table and it was out that I believe the library and in our offices. And actually no one commented on it. So we were bringing it forward as it was presented, uh, to council during the budget presentations in this November, December.
It would be nice if we could figure out a way that, uh, you know, that the public be more aware of what's going on with this. And I don't know how much more can be done because every year we have this conversation and there is funding available and you know there are people out there that can really use this and, uh, uh, it's a shame. It really is a shame that we do have this available. So maybe, you know, maybe eventually uh, word will get out and maybe we can utilize this program. But thank you very much for your explanation.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Uh, other comments or questions from council members? Um, I, I just had one, Mr. Memme. Um, in the plan, um, number three, evaluation of past performance. Um. We'll give you a second to get to that.
Okay, Mr. Allison.
Um, it has a, a box there and it has goal name and goal in outcome indicator. And in that box, uh, outcome indicator, public facility and structure activities uh, other than low, moderate income housing benefits, seventy-seven thousand, one ninety-nine persons assisted. What, what is that number? What does that represent?
I'm good.
Would that be a regional thing?
Yeah, it would be and it all, it, the public facilities are our, our highway system, our, our road improvements. And those kinds of things where people are traveling them all the time.
Okay, that makes sense then. Because the other ones seem and the rest of those seem pretty much in line with what we would have in our city or close area. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you. Um, and even uh, with no other comments or question, uh, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and thank you, Mr. Memme, and
No, thank you to the council. Appreciate it.
Good work. Okay, we will move to item twelve. Uh, certificate of appropriateness, uh, Harv. Uh, item or under item twelve, uh, there's a, the item, the Harv item four was Rhonda Jennings, three twenty-one, three twenty-three and three twenty-five Locust Street, uh, item was denied by the Harv Board. So this Rhonda Jennings is present tonight, I believe, by telephone. And she's muted, I believe.
Hello.
Hello, is that Rhonda Jennings?
Yes.
Okay, welcome tonight.
Thank you.
So you are appealing to council on, uh, the, the denial from the Harv Board on your proposed, uh, repairs to those buildings there. So would you wanna, the floor is open to you to address
Okay.
your issues.
I won't take too much of your time. Um, I appreciate you all taking the time to speak with me. I am sorry that I could not, we could not meet in person. I think that, um, this would be better an issue that I could have more of an effect if I was in person, but I'll do my best here on this phone call. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with the historical board to get permission to replace windows at three twenty-one, three twenty-three, three twenty-five Locust Street. I inherited this property five years ago in a divorce. Um, it's been a, a problem property, I think, for the city for many years. It's been a problem property for me. Um, I inherited it with some very bad tenants. I'd like to point out that landlords always get the blame for the tenants. And of course, I'm sure that everybody sitting on this council knows that tenants have rights and landlords can't just kick them out. So I followed the law and I did the best that I could to get these problem tenants out. I have thus done that and have managed to get some pretty decent tenants in there and now I am trying to clean up the building. Um, I've been fixing things, repairing things, and I wanna put new windows in this building. The middle unit, which is three twenty-three, already has new windows in it. I did not put them in. I don't know who put them in. They were in there when I got the building. I think three twenty-five has one or two new windows, which again I did not put in. Um, some of the windows are missing. They're just boards in the attic. That looks horrible. They're not even there. They're just boarded up. So I went through the historical board because that's the proper route, um, to get permission from them to put in these white vinyl windows because that's what I can afford. That meeting was a disaster. They wouldn't even let me speak. They gave me literally three minutes before I was shut down. Um, they were more concerned about the big black man that sits on the porch. Um, I have no idea what the man was talking about. Uh, they were also concerned about the blinds that my tenant currently has hanging in the windows. So needless to say, it went nowhere. Um, but they denied my request. My one tenant who lives at three twenty-five has a window that is busted. I mean, it's completely cracked through the middle. It's a, a vinyl, you know, replacement window, like I said, that was put in there before I got the property. They won't even let me fix that window for her. They, they just wouldn't even hear it. They wouldn't let me replace the boarded up windows. It, it just was, yeah, the only thing that they wanted to discuss was that I fixed the rotten wood windows, um, that I'm not gonna do because I can't afford to do that. So I'm appealing to you guys, um, to please let me do what I want to do, what I can afford to do. Um, uh, you know, I drove down Third Street, Fourth Street. I took pictures of twenty historic properties that line those streets that have these windows already that I wanna put in this property that's on Locust Street. So I just don't understand the irregularities in, in what happens here. They claim that they were put in illegally, but that's not the case. They were put in with permission. So I'm asking permission to please put windows in my property so I can clean it up, so I can keep decent tenants in there, so I can keep, you know, crime from happening there, so I can do the best I can as a landlord. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, we have also, uh, I believe Mary Vesinsky is on, on by phone in case council has any questions.
Yes.
Mary, thank you. Um, and Councilwoman Mealy has been able to join us as well.
Hi, Randy. How you guys doing? Sorry, I missed, uh, all the excitement.
That's, um, everybody did a, a really good job and we carried the load. Did you, uh, were you chiming into comment, Councilwoman Mealy?
Yeah, I did. I did have a, a handful of comments and questions. Um, Ms. Jennings.
Yeah.
Uh, so when you say that, that Harv did not give you permission to do the windows, did you receive permission from Harv to do other work on your building?
Yes.
And what work was that?
Um, the work that I received was, I'm putting a new roof on. I received a grant through the city. So I got permission to do that through them.
Okay, and, uh-huh, sorry, yep.
And to replace the railing that was busted.
So it, so you went to them with three items and of those three, they approved two without question?
I didn't go to them. Actually, Mary went to them and got the approval through this grant that I applied for. So I never went to them except for the windows.
Oh, okay. Um, Mary, is that an accurate statement? Sorry.
Uh, yes.
I am, okay.
Yeah, the requests were on two separate occasions and because it was a city program under fair and with COVID, I offered to take responsibility to present it to the board so Ms. Jennings wouldn't have to come to the meeting.
Oh, great. That was, that was very kind of you and Harv to allow Ms. Jennings not to attend the meeting, but, but still to, uh, to seek approval for those items. That's, that's excellent. Um, so what I'm hearing is that, is that it sounds as though Harv's been fairly understanding in this case so far. Um, they were willing to allow an applicant to proceed with work without actually appearing before them to, to explain the work um, on, on, on two different items. And now it seems as though Harv has maybe some concerns about vinyl windows in the property. Ms. Jennings, uh, did you ask Harv if there were any other kinds of windows that might have been affected such, they might have accepted as a substitute for the ones that you selected?
I'm sorry, Ms. Mealy. Harv didn't give me a chance because they were more concerned about making inappropriate comments to me really than discussing windows. So no, it didn't go that far. I recorded the meeting, so maybe you could listen to the recording, um, instead of
I would be happy to, Ms. Jennings. Just send me the file, please. Um, that'd be great. Uh, so my, my question for you, I guess, is I, I've had conversations with a handful of members of Harv who were present at the meeting when you went before them and they have all indicated that they have in the past and they would, and that they would be more than willing in this case to try to reach a compromise with you over the, over the question of the windows. You know, oftentimes, you know, a process like this, there's a, there's a give and take.
Well, their only compromise to me was that I fixed the rotten wood windows. The gentleman specifically said, and you can hear him clearly on the recording, you will not remove those windows underneath the roof. They will not be replaced. So I didn't get any spirit of compromise from them at all. It was
That, that said, Ms. Jennings.
Those windows out. That's what he said.
Well, I, I, I apologize if they gave you that impression, but I did speak, as I said, to three of the four or five members who were present and they all assured me that they were interested in achieving a, a compromise on this issue and encouraged me.
Me that at the meeting. Why did they waste my time and make me seek a second, come to the council? And I mean, I don't understand. If that's the route that you're supposed to go to, I don't understand why it had to happen the way that it did instead of me having to come here, waste these people's time, waste my time. I mean, it didn't, it didn't have to go this way.
Well, that, that's good. I'm, I'm glad that you feel that way because I think there is an excellent opportunity for you to return to the Harv Board and speak to them in more depth about your request and look for a compromise position.
I want to put in the vinyl windows that the twenty other properties going down Third and Fourth Street have. I don't want to replace rotten wood windows. I don't wanna do that. So if that's what the Harv Board wants me to do, I'm not open for that.
Is, is that what you told them? Because perhaps that's why you got the impression they weren't willing to compromise.
That's what I'm saying now and that's why I came to the council.
Okay. Well, in the spirit of compromise, I would ask that you return to the Harv Board because Harv is really our, our final arbiter. Council has only contradicted the recommendation of the Harv Board once or perhaps twice in the entire existence of Harv. And in all of those cases, the applicant and Harv have achieved many points of compromise.
Well, I know that council has contradicted it in the Vine Avenue case with the developer there who was there who was doing windows...
We did, we did, we did contradict them on two occasions, I believe.
Okay. Well, I'm here now...
On both of those occasions, uh-huh.
I'm here now, so I'd like to continue with this and I'm asking city, city council to please go with my recommendation of replacing these windows. As I stated, several of them are missing. They are boarded up wooden windows. Um, some of them are rotted out so bad that the frames are sitting on the side of the house. I don't even know how those would be fixed.
Thanks.
So I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not at this juncture willing to do any kind of compromise with the Harb Board. I feel like that man insulted me. He is a racist, sexist, indignant gentleman that I do not wish to have any dealings with again. And that's how I feel. And I can defer this meeting and we can wait until I can have it in public and I can bring the community that he offended and we can discuss it then.
That is completely up to you, Ms. Jennings. My request to the other members of city council and, um, I'm not sure, do we have Norm or Austin White on this call? Norm, are you out there?
Norm.
Okay. Norm, would the proper procedure if council wished to ask Ms. Jennings to go back to the Harb Board be to table this item and ask her to return?
You can just... Pardon? Um, since we're an appeal body on this issue, you can just remand it back to Harb for a new hearing with directions that they please listen to, um, Mrs. Jennings regarding appropriate repairs that are necessary, taking into consideration how other properties are being treated.
Great. I think, I, that, that sounds like what I would request that other members of council consider. Um, in discussions with the members of Harb, I, I'm under the impression that Ms., uh, while I'm sure Ms. Jennings was absolutely polite in her interactions with the Harb Board, um, at every juncture, um, that perhaps she, she didn't really bring a spirit of compromise to the meeting. Um, and, and I think that it is very important, Ms. Jennings, that you understand that, that a board like Harb is, it performs a legal function for the city of Williamsport there. While, while you can of course come to council and then you can appeal if you're on city council, Harb is the, Harb is not the first step. They're really the arbiter, um, for, for these items. City council follows their recommendation because they know what they're talking about.
I'm sorry, Mr. Allison. Mr. Allison, is she the one making the decision here? Cause I'm so confused about why I even came to the council. I came, I didn't come, she's saying that I didn't come to the Harb Board with a spirit of compromise? I came to the Harb Board because I was told that that's what I needed to do to get permission in a property that I pay taxes on to put windows in for my tenants. Now she's saying I need to go back to that board, which nothing, nothing's going to come out of that meeting because that man insulted me. I did nothing in that meeting. Perhaps you all should listen to that recording. I hardly got a chance to speak at all. I couldn't even have a spirit of compromise because he shut the whole thing down.
Well, and I, I understand your frustration, you know, having not been there, I, I can't comment on that, but, um, I, I am intrigued by the, the idea that, um, and I wanted to ask, uh, Mary Viszinski, are there styles of vinyl windows that do meet historical standards?
Uh, there actually are some, um, that, some of that are better than others and, um, some that may be recommended if, particularly if they're on secondary locations. Um, we were, I did not get the impression that there was any possibility of Harb approving replacement of existing vinyl windows on the property. It was the whole, every window that was being requested and nothing less than that.
So, um, so as far as the material itself, the window itself, it sounds like there is some room from, for compromise. Uh, Ms. Jennings, when you say, uh, you don't want to replace the windows that are there, that, did Harb is ask, are you saying that Harb was asking you to replace those wooden windows with new wooden windows? Is that what you were saying?
Yes. He was saying that I needed to look into fixing the wooden windows that were there because he didn't think that they were in that, that of a, that of condition. However, he was not inside my tenant's home. They have to cover the windows with plastic in the winter because the gap and the cold air that comes in. So for him to make a statement like that, he doesn't know how bad the windows are.
The board did offer to come down, asked you for permission to come down and look at the windows because it's difficult to see what they're like from this...
They didn't ask me for permission for that. I recorded that entire meeting on a video recording, on a, on my phone. They never once asked me for permission for that. Never once.
Meeting, he did.
Okay, well, we can all sit together and listen because he did not. The only, he never asked me that. Never. That was never asked me. So I guess we were in, in different meetings because that was never asked.
And then you were going out the door, so...
Well, if I was going out the door, I certainly didn't hear him ask me that.
Well, it...
I heard him tell me about the big black man that sells drugs with the Vietnam hat that sat on my porch, that he couldn't understand that, why he didn't get arrested.
Ms. Jennings, I, it, so be that as it may with, with something said or not, um, apparently there is room for compromise on the windows from what we heard tonight. Would, would you be willing to go back under those circumstances?
To the same people, to that same man?
Well, well, it would be the same, yes, the same Harb Board. I mean, I, I would, um, be willing to, uh, offer to come, to be present at that meeting as an observer. If we could just...
Randy, I, I would be happy to attend as well.
If we could just...
I have another question. How do all these other properties have all of the same windows that I want? How do they get approval for these windows? Can anybody answer that question?
Were they, now I did receive, we received the, the list of the Freedom of Information requests you had. Are they on that list, the ones you're referencing?
Uh, many of them are, yeah.
Okay, cause, uh, there was only a couple I saw that dealt with windows, but it was a lot to sort...
Well, even if there's just one, I mean, how does one get approved and then one does not?
Well, possibly that window is one of the compromise type windows. And, you know, it may look to you like a normal vinyl window, but it may be one of those options.
Well, and Randy, if I can interject, I think the Harb Board actually is in the best position to be able to answer that question because they're familiar with the decisions that they've passed.
I tried to ask them that question at the meeting. I brought the pictures. They wouldn't even look at them. They wouldn't, they refused till he got mad. He said, "I get mad when people show me those pictures. You have no idea. That's not your business." That's what he told me. So I, I don't understand, like, I, the, the, that board is supposed to be for the public to utilize, but when I try to utilize it, I look like the bad person and I don't understand that.
Well, I think...
Ms. Jennings, I don't think anyone's accusing you of being a bad person. I think what we're saying is there may have been a miscommunication and there is definitely an opportunity for compromise with Harb. There are other types of...
But the miscommunication was not on my part. I went there with all the information, trying to ask the right questions and I was completely dismissed. And that's what was said to me. That wasn't my business. The pictures weren't looked at. They wouldn't explain anything to me. So this was my other avenue.
Okay, and, and we're at that point and at this point, we can't, uh, change or, or verify what was or was not done at that point since, uh, nobody on council was at that meeting, but we're offering, uh, a couple council people to be there and as many as would like to make it could come. Um, if you would go back and, you know, start the conversation over and talk about the possible compromises that may be workable for you. Could, would you be willing to do that?
I'm not going to do that if the only option they're giving me is the wooden windows. So if that's what the, the options are, then my answer is no. If they're going to talk to me about other options, then yes.
And, and I think...
I believe, sorry Randy. I, I believe I just heard Mr. Zintzey say that there are other replacement window options that should be available.
And that was asked, we, uh, she, Ms. Jennings was asked if she had checked into the cost for other windows such as, um, clad aluminum windows, which have a smaller frame that would fit better into that type of property. Or if she had checked with anybody, not to repair them all, but to maybe repair the windows on the most visible sides, two sides of the building. How much would it cost to fix those? And as she hadn't, Harb had nothing to go by to say whether the costs were reasonable or whether it was, uh, it too much. And also sometimes it helps when the window supplier can provide information and a sample of what the window looks like. So you can really see, is it a, a window with a big clunky frame and lots of channels in it that will really look odd? Or is it a thinner, uh, window that will fit better and has been designed specifically for this type of property? We had one window, that was it.
Thank you, Mary. I can't overestimate for you how much we will miss your expertise when it is gone. Uh, Mary, Mary has, has somewhat selflessly toiled, um, for the city, uh, as part of the, um, historic review process and she is invaluable. Thank you so much. Um, but, uh, uh, it, so it, it, it sounds to me, Councilwoman Allison and Ms. Jennings, as though there, there might be some options to be considered. Um, uh, Randy, I'm sorry that I stole the floor from you. Please feel free.
No, you're just, uh, you're reiterating, um, I think what I, I said earlier. So, you know, we're just back to the point. Would you be willing to go back not to discuss, um...
Oh, yeah.
All, you know, discuss some of the options, Ms. Jennings.
Randy, can I jump in?
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry, I muted myself. Um, first off, Ms. Jennings, thanks for joining us. Um, I would like to hear that recording, um, if, if you could get that...
Can I ask who you are, sir? I, I'm sorry. When I was at the Harb meeting, I got no one's name, so I would like to know who I'm speaking to.
Yeah, no, happily. Uh, my name's Adam Yoder. I'm one of the seven members of city council. Um, thanks for joining us, number one. Um, number two, I would be interested in hearing that recording. So if you would be so kind as to send that, uh, to the city clerk.
I sure will.
Um, thank you very much. Um, I, I've, I've been listening to the conversation. I've been listening to both sides of this. Um, as, as bureaucratic as this may be, um, I, I would, I would kindly ask you to go back and, and, and work with the Harb Board to, um, see if there are some other options. It sounds like there are. And I would specifically ask the Harb Board to make sure that, um, we are offering some flexibility, um, within this instance specifically here. You know, when you look at the property, um, I don't know a lot of the background, um, as a new council member with the historic district, how the lines were drawn, et cetera. I appreciate this, the city's history within the historic district, but I, I can't say what specifically is historic about this house.
Nothing.
I think we serve it as much as we can. Um, but at the same time, you know, we, we need to get these people some new windows. So, um, I, I hope that both parties can come together with an open mind and work together to come up with a solution that's amicable for everybody. Uh, Ms. Jennings, if you would be so kind as to do that, um, you, you have, you will have council leadership there, um, to, to, to listen in to make sure that, I think that, that this goes well. Um, I think that would be fantastic and, and at least would be much appreciated for me.
Mr. Yoder, I, I appreciate you, uh, chiming in. Thank you. You seem to be a very nice man and I appreciate that. It's funny because when I, when this happened, I was so very upset when I left that meeting and when I called Mr. Allison, he was such a nice man on the phone. And when I spoke to the mayor, what a nice man too. And I got such a different tone from the two of them than I am getting tonight at this meeting. I don't know what happened. I think I have an idea what happened. Um, and now I'm just super pissed again. Like I just, I am, I, I am just trying to get my tenants' windows that they should have. And I sit here listening to this meeting while I'm waiting for, for my thing to come up on the agenda and I hear you guys talk about funding and how, you know, you need numbers for this funding that our community needs. And you know what? In order to get these numbers, you need to have housing for these people. And, you know, you hit the nail on the head when you said that you don't know what's historical about Locust Street. There's nothing historical about Locust Street except a line on a map that somebody drew. This house was a dump. I mean, seriously, it was a dump. And I'm just trying to fix it up and make it affordable for people to live in. And they want to fight with me over windows and I just cannot get over it. And it's no wonder that people are moving out of the city in droves because, uh, this is just ridiculous, the bureaucracy that we have to go through for stuff. And I am just at my wit's end with it. And to ask me to swallow my pride and go back in front of that man who insulted me and then to say that you don't know that it happened, it happened. I mean, it happened. And I'm not going to do it. So, sorry, Mr. Allison, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it with Ms. Mealy there. I'm not going to do it with you there. So I guess the windows that are in the building are going to stay in the building and that's that. So I thank you all for your time and I'm done with this meeting. You all have a good night.
Mr. Mackey.
Uh, well, Ms. Jennings hung up, so, um, yeah, I, I have a lot of thoughts on this and they might not be popular thoughts amongst the rest of council members or the administration. Um, you know, I, I'm looking at this, Liz, I'm sorry, could you mute yourself?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I hear some background noise there. Um, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this property on Google Maps and I'm, I'm asking myself, is it any, any window that this, uh, Ms. Jennings would put in, in this house would be a, a huge improvement over what's in there now? And I tend to agree with her sentiment that what, what are we talking about here? I mean, uh, nothing against Locust Street, but what is the historical significance of Locust Street? Uh, you know, there's a house right next door, 319 Locust Street. It's, it's a really nice looking place and it appears to have replacement windows in it. Um, now I could be wrong. I'm looking at this on the computer. I am not there in person. And, uh, you know, I, I, I understand that, that there's, there's not a lot of precedent for council overturning a board like Harb or say, for instance, the zoning hearing board or something like that. I get that. But, but this is the system that, that we have given, uh, residents and, and people who live in this city to go through, you know? And it sounds like she didn't have any luck with Harb. I personally can't imagine that any window, other than the ones that are currently in there now, just looking at this property on the internet would be, that it's going to be an improvement. Um, and I, I, I for one, I for one don't think that we should be making landlords, for one, who want to improve their properties jump through all of these hoops. So I personally, I, I get it. I get there's no precedent. Um, there's not a lot of, you know, examples of us overturning the Harb Board and this is nothing against the Harb Board. I think they serve an important role. But, uh, at the same point, I, you know, I think we, we just need to let her put in the windows. This is ridiculous. And that's just my opinion.
Okay, before we go too far down... Okay, before we go too far down that road, it's a federally designated area. It's different than whether the houses look historic or not, that can be debated or argued, but the area has been set. Now, if we're going to do what you're saying, we can't just spot change things, or we're going to go down a road that we're not going to be able to control what happens. If we're going to reset precedent, we're going to have to have a plan, we're going to have to do some research. How are we going to ply this? Which properties, and how are we going to identify them? Because you go halfway down the block and you're closer to the mansions and everything. So I really think we have to think this through before we kind of react to this particular situation.
I understand that. So you're, and again, forgive me for not knowing this, but are you telling me that there, when the Harb Board makes their decisions, they're following a strict set of guidelines? There's no, you know, interpretation of what they might think looks better than others, you know?
I think there's some leeway, and we heard that tonight. I really believe, I thought we almost had something set here. I'm disappointed that we were not able to complete that. I think, you know, this is a conversation we need to have with the Harb Board before we jump in and change anything, or even make a decision on this particular. You know, I'm just saying, we need to have a conversation and do that research that you're talking about right now, so that we know the parameters of what we're dealing with. I'm just hesitant to see us, on one case, begin to set a precedent that, you know, it's a window now, then, well then how do you stop wholesale change at some point?
Hey Randy? Can I break in, just because I do, I think I'm the only member of council who lives in the district. So I might be able to offer a little bit of a perspective as someone who does live in the historic district and who does value the design standards established in the district as a mechanism for protecting my property value. That's not to say that I would have opposed the recommendation of Harb for replacement windows in this case, if that, if it had come from them. But there, John, there are several things to consider when you, when you look at the historic district. Yes, a very committed member of people from Williamsport a couple of decades ago went to the federal government and asked for the designation of this entire neighborhood as a historic district. And that means all of the houses form part of it and are part of the historic fabric of the district. That house is historic, as I would imagine Mary can tell you. It wouldn't have been a mansion, but it would have been a home to people who worked in those Victorian mansions on either Third or Fourth Street. And that house's windows are reparable. Now, I'm not saying that that is the path that Ms. Jennings should go. It is expensive. I just had two wooden windows in my house completely restored, and it was a very expensive proposition. And that is definitely not something that everyone wants to undertake. But I think what we heard is that there are multiple paths between what Ms. Jennings had selected for the property and the perfect historical restoration that might be the wish of Harb in every case. I think what we're ignoring here is the idea of compromise. Ms. Jennings wanted a vinyl window, that, you know, the classic vinyl window that you see in a, you know, a new-built suburban home. And I'm sure that the Harb members in their heart of hearts would like to see people restore wooden windows all the time, but everyone knows that that is not financially feasible for owners of most of these properties. And so what needs to be achieved is a compromise, maybe a slightly better quality replacement window that is not the same as the wood window, but maintains the look of the structure. You know, it is a spirit of compromise, and what it does for all of us, ideally, John, is raises the caliber of the housing and the quality of the structures in the district, and it gives Williamsport a historical gem that becomes an asset to the community. And it, you know, it separates us from other communities that don't engage in historic preservation in the way that we do. I know that I am particularly passionate about this issue, and that's part of the reason that I own property in the district, and that I really grew up there. But, but I can speak to it as someone who lives in the district and who has abided on multiple occasions, too many to count, by the recommendations of Harb. And I can say that they are, they are fair, and they do work with you. And if you can provide them with the documentation that they ask for, they will do everything they can to meet your needs. That has been my experience. Of course, you know, once a year, we have someone who's, who is angry about the decision that Harb has made, and that is to be expected with any board that has the power to tell people they can't necessarily do what they want to do. But 90% of the time, if not more, Harb comes to a compromise with the people who own property in the district, and everyone walks away, if not delighted, at least satisfied with their final product. I think that is a dangerous balance to try to step into and to try to unbalance. You know, I, knowing that a handful of people had spoken to Ms. Jennings, I spoke to the Harb Board just to try and figure out exactly what they felt had happened in this situation. And frankly, they were all surprised that Ms. Jennings was angry about the interaction, which struck me as interesting. But, you know, I think they did approach this in a spirit of compromise, and I hope that at some point Ms. Jennings will be able to do the same. Because I think that that will achieve great things for that property on Locust Street that is right around the corner from my house, and I would love to see that property be in better condition than it is.
Mr. Cooley.
Thanks, Randy.
Yes, thank you, you're welcome. Mr. Cooley.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Would we be able to ask Mr. Cooley to pull up the street view of this property so we can all share together and see exactly what this property currently looks like? Can we do that, Randy?
Sure, Mr. Cooley.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just think if we're all on the same page looking at this property right now, you know, we can all get a better idea of what the current property looks like. You know, I'm leaning with Mr. Mackey, not, you know, I don't, I don't think we should look at redrawing the historic lines, but I also pulled this property up, and I'm looking at it right now. I mean, like, like Ms. Jennings said, there's plywood in some of those windows, and it sounds like it was made very apparent that if not the vinyl windows that's been requested, there's going to be no improvement made whatsoever. And looking at the condition of these, Liz, I, you know, I agree with trying to keep the aesthetics of the downtown to keep a certain value, but surely anything that we can do to this particular property to replace these windows will increase value. I don't see how.
I think, I think what I'm saying, Vince, is that.
That badly.
I think what I'm saying is that there are multiple avenues that no one has explored here yet. There are compromised positions between the vinyl windows that Ms. Jennings wants and preserving the wooden windows, and we haven't looked at that, which is why I asked that we remand this back to the Harb Board. And I still think, even in the absence of Ms. Jennings, that that is what we should do with it, in case she chooses to take this issue back up with them at some point.
So what would happen? I'm sorry, go ahead, Liz.
I think council should send this back to Harb and say, we hope that she reconsideres that she goes back to Harb and seeks a compromised position.
And what if she doesn't?
People get, people get angry and they get worked up. She will probably get cited for the windows at some point. And then she will go back before Harb.
And we don't want to see that happen.
No, I don't think that we do, but I think we can, when people cool off.
Subvert that. Mr. Banks.
Thank you, President Allison. I would be hesitant to overturn Harb, at least right now, I think tempers are high right now. And Harb is our group of experts, you know, that has been appointed to deal with these things. So for us to look at the property and say it's in poor condition, well, I mean, we have individuals that are appointed to that board to act as our subject matter experts, because, you know, we all have our own areas of expertise. So I would agree with sending this back to Harb, to Harb, and, you know, and I would be willing to go to that meeting as well, you know, to just sit through it as an observer. But I think for us to subvert this decision by Harb right now, it might set a precedent that we may not want to set.
We absolutely, if we approved her to just put regular vinyl windows in, how are we going to stop anybody then? But I would, I would suggest this, if, clearly, Councilwoman Mealy and myself are persona non grata with her at this point. I was, she's right, I was very polite with her on the phone, and I believe I was polite with her tonight, and was trying to work a compromise, but that's off the board. So some of those of you, Mr. Mackey and Mr. Yoder, and Mr. Banks, would want to reach out to her to, to see if we could, you know, still broker a compromise. Mr. Mackey.
Yeah, thank you, President Allison. I guess maybe just to your comment about, you know, if we let her put these windows in, I don't think we're opening up the floodgates here. I mean, we still have a system in place, right? Anybody in this historic district that wants to make changes would have to go before the Harb Board. And if they don't get the decision they like, then they appeal to us. This is the system that we've established, and they would still have to come through City Council, is that correct?
Think this through, though. It comes to us, and this time we say no. They can appeal to the court. They can go to the county court. And if the county court looks at it and says, well, you made the compromise here, what's the difference with this place? You know, that's why I'm saying, we can't be super hasty on this.
Well, I would ask, why do we even have this process? I mean, if she's going to come to City Council and we're going to say, well, listen, we can't overturn Harb because we don't want to get sued by the next person, then why do we, why are we even doing this? Would be my ultimate question. It seems kind of, it seems kind of pointless. And again, I'm very new to this whole process, but.
Well, exactly. I don't think we're saying, we're not saying that. What we're saying on this specific case is, there may be a workable compromise. I can't get past that point. You know, it was presented to her that there are some, some options other than the wooden windows, which she seemed fixated that all they would stand for were the wooden windows. I think it was made clear tonight, there are some options in vinyl-type windows that would, they might be a good fit for her. We don't know that, you know? Now, if it came back and push came to shove, yeah, we could revisit it and vote on it then. You know, it's, I don't have any problems with that. I just think we lost a great opportunity there to, to bring both sides together and kind of, you know, create, I don't know.
Randy, I think that in, the one time that I was on council, the council did partly overrule a decision by Harb, the, you know, the applicant had gone to the Harb Board, there had been a number of compromises made and understandings arrived at, and there was one small sticking point, which was the question of whether or not the replacement windows that Harb did agree to, which I don't know that they were vinyl, but the replacement windows that Harb and the applicant settled on, whether or not they had to be curved in nature. And that was the point that council overturned. It was a pretty small point. John, just to give you a sense of the scope, we have, as I said, we have voted against the wishes of Harb in a handful of cases where an economic hardship, where an economic hardship request was truly well-made, you know, where the person came and said, look, this is what it's going to cost precisely for me to do what Harb wishes, and there is simply no financial way that I can make that happen on this list. Right? But I think we haven't really received that sort of case today. If we were looking at this as a legal proceeding, which frankly it somewhat is, we are the first route of appeal to Harb, then the documentation that we would want to overturn a ruling by a board that we have put in place to make this decision for us, is documentation related to costs, related to financial hardship, related to the costs of alternatives that the applicant is not willing to consider. Those, that's information that I would want, before I would be willing to consider overturning a Harb decision. And do you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Mackey? It's not, to me, whether Harb's role is partly to look at the aesthetics of something, to me, that is not my role. My role is to say, can you prove to me that Harb is being unreasonable in making this demand by showing me the numbers, showing me the possibilities you consider that were turned down by Harb, et cetera? I don't feel that we saw that today. And now, if Ms. Jennings returns to the Harb Board and explores this further with them and comes back to us with a set of numbers, then I think that's a totally different discussion. But, you know, we, we didn't really get a case, Ms. Jennings just left the discussion. And so I think that's kind of what we should be looking for moving forward. And when you reach out to her, I think maybe you should underline that, that it is about understanding the cost of doing these various and sundry different kinds of work, knowing what the replacement window options are out there and how much they augment cost. It's, you know, it's the work that we did with the ramp when we got six different bids, it's that sort of stuff that most homeowners do when they do a job. So that, you know, it's important to consider that, I think.
Mrs. Cooley.
Thank you, Randy. Liz, when is the next Harb meeting?
Tuesday evening, Vince.
So if we were to remand this back to the next Harb meeting, Ms. Jennings would obviously be able to come back then, that Tuesday evening. Mr. Yoder, you had requested the recording of the last meeting, at least what Ms. Jennings recorded, correct? Okay, so, Mr. Yoder, when you get that recording, I don't know if you have already yet, or whenever you get it, I would also like to hear that recording too, but, you know, and, right now, I think maybe it's the best idea. Liz, I understand where you're coming from, but me also, as somebody that owns rental properties in the city, wanting to increase the value of them, to increase the neighborhood and keep the community better, yeah, that building definitely needs some new windows. But before I would vote to overturn Harb's decision, I would like to at least hear the recording that she says she has. I think that's probably the best way, at least, so I could hear both sides of this argument right now, is to hear, Adam, if she presents you with that recording, yeah, I think we should hear that first, before we would look to overturn this decision, just to verify whichever side is coming out, as President Allison said, you know, we want to hear everything that's going on. And then we'd give Ms. Jennings the option to appear before Harb next Tuesday, and hopefully we could come to something mutually beneficial, but regardless, it's going to need new windows.
Could I just check one thing with Mr. Lubin?
Go ahead.
So Harb would be classified. Would be classified as a, a, a public meeting, correct?
Yes.
So she would be allowed to, to, uh. Record it?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're hung in there. Mr. Yoder.
Yeah, um. This is an interesting one. Um, that's, that's, that's for sure. Um. Look, I, uh, I, I would like to see this go back to the Harb board one more time. Um, you know, for the simple fact that. I would like to see if we can work with her to accommodate both. The place needs new windows. We don't want to see that building go. Further down the road that it's going. Um, I'm happy to see that she is, uh, looking to put in new windows. Hopefully. Harb can work with her to come to a resolution. I would also though, challenge Harb, um, to make sure that we are, or that Harb is. Um, being more flexible throughout the historic district. And I say that because. Uh, a fairly common theme that I heard from homeowners within the. Um, historic districts over the past couple of years since I was running for and have been on council. There, there, there does appear to be a. Feeling that at times Harb is too strict. Um, and I'm not sitting sure that this necessarily is or is not the case with this individual case, but. Nonetheless, I, I do think we need to keep that in mind. We want to preserve our history and we want to, um, you know. I, i- it's a very rich history that we have, but, you know, we've got to be very cognizant of, of who we're dealing with on an individual property basis. And we need to make sure that we're finding the line between, um, preserving history and, and preserving our neighborhoods. And, um, I, I, I just think a, a friendly reminder to Harb of that is appropriate right now. And, uh, I'm hoping that they can work together to come to a, a common resolution. So I, I, I would like to send this back to them, um, before we do any kind of overturning or, or what have you.
Totally agree. Yeah, I think we're all agreement on this at this point, are we? So, Mr. Lubin, we need to take a vote to remand this back to Harb?
Yeah, there should be a motion to remand it back to Harb, uh, maybe with some directions. About trying to compromise this matter or to work with, uh, Mrs. Jennings.
Randy, can I take a stab at that?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we send this back to the Historic Architectural Review Board, uh, with the intention of. Uh, some leadancy and finding some common ground with Ms. Jennings, uh, to find an amicable solution between both the property owner. Uh, and the Historical Architectural Review Board.
I will second that.
There's a motion and a second. And I think we've had. A lot of discussion on this, so I'm not even going to ask any more questions unless somebody has something really. Pertinent that would. Add to the, what we've already talked about. Mr. Mackey.
Not to this, I mean, this is somewhat related to this case, but a- and again, I. I, I will make it my goal to find out more about this historic. Section of the city, but maybe we could think about looking into redrawing some of these lines.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, uh, anything's possible. Uh, I, just so we, you know. If we do our homework. We can. Be confident that we're not. Making a mistake. Okay, we have a, uh, motion and a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
No.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Uh, she had to leave.
That's right. Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes five to one. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. And, uh, that was a good, interesting discussion, everyone. We'll move to item thirteen. Uh, except for filing Williamsport municipal water and sanitary minutes. Uh, for March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, Veterans Memorial Park Commission, March first, twenty twenty one. Finance Committee minutes of April thirteenth, twenty twenty one, and April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. Public Works of April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, and Bureau of Codes, January, February, March of twenty twenty one. Is there a motion in the second?
I'm a little.
Second.
Uh, questions or comments, corrections? Hearing now, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes six oh. Uh, our announcements, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty one at seven P M remotely. Upcoming meetings, Friday, May fourteenth, eleven A M, E R C, and they do have a meeting this week, tomorrow. Uh, twelve P M Housing Needs. I'm not sure, is that meeting?
Liz, do you have an agenda?
Uh, housing needs, no, not to the best of my knowledge, Janice, although I do have a handful of progress that I'll need to get moving on here now, so. Also have to have some.
Okay. Tuesday, May eighteenth, six thirty P M, Harb. Wednesday, May nineteenth, ten A M, Lighted Property. Thursday, May twentieth, three P M, Accessibility Advisory Commission. Four P M, Board of Health. Tuesday, May twenty fifth, eleven thirty A M, Public Safety. One P M Finance Meeting, two thirty P M Public Works. Wednesday, May twenty sixth, eleven thirty A M, Redevelopment Authority, and then we have our city council meeting. Are there any, uh, comments and, uh, from council members tonight? I have been, uh, in discussion with a couple different council members. Uh, and probably. Maybe everybody at some point, uh, to begin to open up the discussion about when we. Uh, may go back to public meetings on some level in some form. So, um. We kind of burnt the candle a little long tonight. I don't know if, uh. Anyone wants to open that up at this point or. Have a special meeting for that? What's your preference? Mr. Yoder.
Uh, no, I mean, if everybody's comfortable spending a couple of minutes on it, I mean, I. With, 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 with city business ramping up, you know, with, with things starting to kind of. Progress back to some degree of normalcy, um, with, with vaccines readily accessible. I, I'm at least comfortable on an individual basis, going back in person. Um, I, I think frankly, things will probably be done in a more effective manner at this point. Um, so that, that's just my personal. Feedback. I'm okay with it. Um, I'm, I'm ready whenever everybody else is. And I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mackey.
Yeah, I, I would just second Councilman Yoder. I, I also, you know, with the restrictions being lifted at the end of the month here. And now with this new CDC report coming out that's saying, you know, full, fully vaccinated people can. Pretty much go unmasked. Um, I think the ultimate question would be, do we? Go back to trade and transit two until, um, the improvements to City Hall are made. Would be the ultimate question for me. I, I think in person, I think we need to get back to in person. It's just where, where is that going to be? Um, and I would say if the ADA, you know, um. Improvements at City Hall aren't done, then I say we go back to trade and transit two until they are done.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Randy? Oh, uh. I was just going to say, I think John raises a good question, though. It might also be a, a good discussion to have with our staff. Um, because I'm not certain how much mobilization is required for freight and transit two at this point, if we were to decide to return there and then at some point shortly thereafter to return to City Hall. Um, so there might be perhaps a slight question of economics, you know, and, and or. You know, just, just general work, um, for someone to be considered when we, when we, when we talk about that. Um, but I think, I, I certainly think, um, that I have missed you all. And, and getting, getting back to, uh, getting back to in-person meetings will allow us to be far more productive than we are currently.
Good point. Mr. Banks.
Um, I agree. I agree with the sentiments that have been put forward thus far. I think it's time for us to get back in person if we can do so, um. Uh, logistically speaking, in a way that's. Can do so, and, and to protect the public, you know, we don't want to be vectors, but I think a lot of us are vaccinated at this point, so. You know, it, it will be good. We'll be more productive, definitely.
Right. And. Mr. Pelosi.
Does this mean I can't wear sweatpants to the meetings anymore?
Yeah.
Speak for yourself, Vince.
Yeah.
Whether in City Hall or Trade and Transit. The tables are covered.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think the dress goes out the window for good now.
I'm fully in favor of, uh, of, of getting back to in-person. So I don't, I don't want to disappoint Councilwoman Mealy. Uh, I'm sure she misses all of us. So.
So, okay, great. So, uh, the first thing we probably need to do is, uh, start to re- look into the timeline. For City Hall and, um, what makes sense there. So. That should be eas- easily. Figured out. Quickly enough that we can start to make plans. So, well, good. That was. That was painless. Okay. Um, other comments from council members tonight? I didn't see any, anything from the administration tonight. That's a no. Um, I know there are comments from the public.
Uh, we received, uh, an email from Mr. Paul Young from Montoursville. And his comment is. The public comment in regards to the C T L's use of the third floor of the Trade and Transit Center. Could the council and mayor please bring the community up to speed on what is being done to rectify this issue? When is the last time the mayor has contacted Penn Dot? Is other city-owned property being offered to help with the educational programs that are offered by C T L on the third floor? The city needs to fix this issue for the best interest of the community, that users this space by a great nonprofit organization. Uh, being told not to use a space is an eviction. Fix this now. Maybe Mr. Young has a space in Montoursville for C T L. Next is an email, uh, that Mrs. Frank received. One day earlier this week. And it's from. Mr. Dan Manaville, uh, resides on Heprin Street in Williamsport. To whom it may concern, Brandon Park Commission, Streets and Parks Department, Recreation Commission, whatever. The Brandon Park Bandshell needs work done on it. For over a year now, there has been a gaping hole in the blocks on the left front of the bandshell. It is very noticeable and dangerous. I have watched small children and teenagers both climb up it using the hole that is there to get up. On the stage. It is a wonder no one has fallen backwards and landed on the cement and sued the city for medical bills. The whole bandshell needs a fresh coat of paint and/or good scrubbing. The lavatories probably need some work too. There is also the building behind it that, that used to be used with the swimming pool that probably needs refurbishing. And these fa- facilities need to be open because a lot of. Children use the nearby playground equipment. Also, this project needs done now ASAP. We really need to see the Sunday night summer concert series in the park return this year. I have already seen schedules posted for activities in Indian Park in Montoursville and at the amphitheater in Lock Haven for this summer. This whole situation bothers me as a result, as a resident of the nearby area who walks through Brandon Park a lot. And sees the eyesore of the brand bandshell, which should be used to attract attention, not detract appearance. Thank you for your attention on this. Uh, Mrs. Frank also received a second email. From Mr. Manaville. And this one refers to. The, uh, C T L. The Community Theater League of Williamsport has been a valuable commodity here since the, its inception back in the nineteen seventies. Since nineteen ninety-nine, it has been in its present home downtown in the Trade and Transit Building on East Third Street. About five or six years ago, they started using the third floor there and established a smaller theater, the Jason. Moyer Studio Theater, which offered smaller cast plays in a small but intimate setting. The public has enjoyed many outstanding performances. Such as Driving Miss Daisy, Tuesdays with Maury, Doubt. I could go on, but these are very special, well-known and extremely popular shows. No more. They have been evicted from their third floor location because of some administrative inaccuracies done by the previous administration. So the public has to suffer this loss. And what is the whole story and complete story? We should now know and demand the truth be told. I am an avid theater goer and will miss this ass outlet, and I vote. And that was, th- those are the only three that we have received.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lubin. And, uh, I believe we are going to be fixing the bandshell very soon. So that's going to be taken care of and. Uh, C T L is, uh, a, a whole other. Subject that, uh, we're not able to address right now. And it, in depth, uh, so. Having heard all of that, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move. So move. Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, too. Good night, everybody. Good job.